World Call to Order. Our first agenda item is Administrative Business, which is the calendar, which is up on the screen. I think one of the new items is the September 30th Devotion Parent and Community Information Meeting, and most of the other items have been on there for a while, which are great. And there's a Consent Agenda, the past record of the September 10th School Committee Meeting. So can I have a motion for that? Ms. Stone, seconded by Mr. Chang, all those in favor? Excellent. All right. So we will move on to welcome our -- we will move on to welcome our Chinese exchange visitors. Mr. Lantos.
This feels like we were just here. This is the 16th year of our exchange program, and I want to ask Grant Rhodes to come up. He's got some special news to share with you, and then I'll interview him.
Thank you so much.
Yes, hi, I'm Grant Rhodes, and Chair of the committee that supports the China Exchange Program. And it's now the 20th year of the Gaoxing School, so our program goes back almost to the beginning of the founding of that school in Xi'an. And five years ago, Dr. Lupini actually went to Xi'an for the 15th anniversary celebration. And the weekend before last, I was actually there for the 20th celebration. And I think I was probably 48 hours on the ground, 48 hours in the air. It was actually 50 hours on the ground and 46 in the air. But when I arrived, I arrived at my schedule was 1:00 in the morning and delayed two hours from Beijing, so I was 3:00 in the morning. And two of the administrators there who help us every year at this point, Shabang and Kevin, were there to be the grieving and taking the Michael tone and see how we set up the meeting. And I thought, well, you know, this is really outstanding friendship if we do this. And then two days later, I left at 5:00 in the morning. And Madame Zhao, who was founder of the school and founder of this program along with Claire Jackson, who was there with the senior at 5:00 in the morning along with Madame Wong, who is the principal of the high school. So the program is the oldest, strongest program that the Gaoxing School has with many international programs in Australia, in Singapore, in UK, in the United States, and they're expanded to New Zealand, to Japan, and so forth. So the whole campus is five campuses, and there's an international campus. So they're very committed to international progress to this school. But we're the lout coming out, we're the old friends of their operation. So I have to say that this is the way they took care of me, but they take care of all of our kids from Brookline and go there in the same way. And so, you know, I'm feeling that the vibrancy is they're still very committed there, we're very committed here, you know, over the last five years since Steve started.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much, and we're so grateful, and we love this program, so we're excited to meet our students.
Thank you. So let me bring up the teacher, Lillian, or Vinnie, she and I work closely to provide, hopefully, the best possible experience for her students.
Thanks, Adrian. Yes, I feel nervous. In fact, I have recited my speech already, but I think maybe reading is a better choice for me. I'm so nervous, even. Thanks, okay. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to see all of you here. First of all, let me take the opportunity to express my deep gratitude for what you have done before and after our arrival in the US. This is the 16th time we get together to have this exchange program. A toast to you and I have brought our hope and the passion to be here, and we are eager to learn and share and live. Now, we are staying as the typical American families and experience the amazing American life with all of you. First, I want to thank all the host families. Yeah, you have offered us everything we need. All of you have tried your best to take such good care of us and make us feel happy. Thank you so much, all the host families. And I also want to thank Steve. You have spent a lot of time and energy on this program, and you have all mastered everything for us so well. You have kept in touch with everyone of us since we knew we were the lucky dogs of this program. And you have helped us find such good host families and often spend your weekends taking us to explore the complete new world. Thank you so much, Steve. And then I want to thank Dr. Lupini, Grant, and Ms. Hong. Thank you so much for your support for the program and the help you give us. I hope that in the following four months and a half, my kids and I will be deeply involved in everything here because of this valuable opportunity to learn everything well. Finally, I want to say one more. Thank you so much, everyone. And I believe all of us will enjoy the exchange trip. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zhao Jiayi. I'm very glad to share my feelings during the days I have been in America. First of all, I'd like to give the most serious thanks to the Gaoxing Number One High School and Brooklyn High School to give me a chance to become an exchange student and meaningful and enjoyable happier. Next, I'd like to give thanks to all the host families. They are generous. They provide all the things we need for us, and they are patient. Whenever we couldn't understand them, we repeat a lot till we got it. Finally, I'd like to thank my teachers and friends. They are the harbor for my heart when I feel alone. We cry together and laugh together. I believe we will become an invisible team. Sorry. With grateful hearts, we are ready to set our new journey full of challenges and opportunities. Forgive my accent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Clarence. Nice to meet you. I've been here for nearly a month, and I really love this place. Friendly people, natural environment, helpful classmates, and kind teachers. We have different experiences here. I tried to design a car for the first time. I chartered with people, difficultly but happily. I also made delicious food by myself. This program has built a bridge of communication between American and Chinese students. We will treasure this chance and do our best. Here, I'd like to thank Brooklyn High School, Gaoxing Number One School, our host families. And in the coming five months, we will try to be used to here and experience the new life. I'm very glad to be here. Thank you.
Good afternoon. No, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Aloha. I'm Sun Haining. It's my honor here to share my experience from the last readings. I wrote them at court and here at staff for the very first time. For the very first time, I shared my dinner time with two chickens and a cute parrot. For the very first time, I started my first class in the swimming pool. For the very first time, I slept in the breath of the mountain forest and beneath the burning stars. For the very first time, I saw a Thanksgiving meal walking on the streets. For the very first time, I met a chemistry teacher who is even cooler than the one I know from the TV show Freaking Bad. For the very first time, I was in the Boston Tea Party. I was told keep calm and pour the tea. Now, every day was like a fresh start for me. A lot to discover, a lot to fit, a lot to learn, and a lot to put my passions in. Thank you, Gaoxing Rhodes. You pointed out a road for us to journey on. Thank you for the chance, and you received us like travel coming home. And all the good people and host families who have contributed to this program were all here because of you. My talk is about to finish, but our story begins. Long as the program exists, I mean, all of us have a remarkable five months in our memory. Thank you.
What can you say? So we do definitely look forward to spending the next almost five months together, and when we come back, we'll have a chance to meet our eight students who will be going to China around February 1st. But I just want to acknowledge the teacher who will be going with them, my colleague, Ms. Alden Redwood. We would love to stay. The Penns have seven o'clock tickets to see the Red Sox.
Oh, it only takes 15 minutes.
Very quick comments from the committee, Ms. Robsky.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could introduce the host parents who are here, just so we could know who they are. Or they could introduce themselves, possibly.
Scott.
I'm Katherine Ralston, my hosting area.
Thank you.
Ni hao. Wǒ jiāo scá tōu láo shù. And I have been in your school a number of times and have had wonderful conversations with people there, have worked with teachers there, and I'm happy that this program is continuing and that you are here in Brookline going to our Brookline High School. I hope you have a wonderful year, and I know that when our Brookline students go back to the Gaoxing School, they will be having a wonderful time there. So thank you for coming. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being willing to leave the comfort of your home and go off on a great adventure. Enjoy the year.
Thank you, and I think it's time for a ballgame. Thank you so much for coming. Have a wonderful few months. Although I wish we could spend more time talking about this program, instead, we're going to move on to a budget calendar discussion. I first want to express that Dr. Jackson is unable to be here tonight because of a death in the family, and Dr. Lupini is unable to be here given a previous engagement, but we shall do their reports in their absence with lots of help from senior staff. So why don't we start with finance?
So we have second readings of two items tonight. One is the Budget Calendar, and then the second is the Budget Development Guidelines. And for the calendar, we'll start with that. The main things you'll note that are different from prior versions are a few of the dates in the end have been moved up, and also we've separated, or I shouldn't say we, Mary Ellen has separated out the capital budget process from the operating budget process to make that more clear for everyone. So I will ask folks if, based on this revised version, if people have any additional comments or questions for myself or for Mary Ellen.
Let's just give people a minute to take a look at it. So should we assume where it says, for example, review of the CIP with the Capital Subcommittee, that's our Capital Subcommittee, and then when it says CIP, Capital Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee, that's their Capital Subcommittee? But unless otherwise noted, it's our Capital Subcommittee?
I believe that's correct.
Is that right?
Mary Ellen, yes.
Okay, great. That's helpful. I know that was one of the -- thank you for clearing that up. I know that was a question from a couple iterations ago. Any last questions?
I have to apologize. I wasn't listening to your preface to this. Did you say the School Committee Subcommittee, Finance Subcommittee meetings will be scheduled also?
So they will be, once we have this approved, they will be scheduled in accordance to this, and then also reflecting some of our other agendas for the Finance Subcommittee, for example, the policy review, et cetera.
So that's somewhat of a departure from what we've done before, where we've included it in the calendar, but it will be scheduled.
That's right.
Okay, that's good. I'll move it.
So we have a motion. Do you have a, I guess, yeah, we have discussion afterwards. You have a motion, or maybe you can second it. Maybe Beth is moving it.
Oh.
I'll move it. Discussion.
So, I mean, Mary Ellen, I don't know if you want to help us out or a little on the, just on the first round of the Capital Project Subcommittee's review of the CIP, the School Department's CIP project proposals, which it seems like were perhaps not quite on this schedule. Maybe this is what we want to be on, or, because when we get to our report, I was going to say that we're going to have a Capital Project Subcommittee meeting to review that in that Subcommittee. How does that fit with these first two capital budget entries?
This calendar will probably be updated and modified through the course of our setting of our meetings, so some of the preliminary staff meetings have occurred regarding the capital improvement plan. We're now attempting to schedule a meeting with School Committee Capital Subcommittee to sort of pull that all together and then lay that calendar out. So October, you're talking about trying to schedule for October 2nd?
Exactly.
So I didn't include that yet until we actually had that. So those will get updated, and this calendar will be dynamic.
So I guess what I don't understand is that they're doing an online program, and then staff, then the staff review of them. Like, how does putting them into an online program correlate with first staff developing them to a level at which they can then bring them to the Capital Subcommittee and get feedback? Because it seems like that formalizing them into the online program might be then the third step, but I just maybe don't understand the process.
So you and I will be discovering this together, I think. There's an online program, they want to have all of the potential submissions put into by staff and developed, and then there's a series of meetings that the staff goes through with Melissa Goff, the Assistant Town Administrator, on vetting what those are, more information, additional information, what's the financing that might be needed, and sort of some of the nitty-gritty details, so that they get flushed into sort of more complete proposals to then go forward to the decision-making boards and committees. And she also has an opportunity to make the determination about whether it does fit in the CIP funding plan, or what funds are available, what funds aren't available, what won't fit. And we can talk a little bit more about what that process looks like on October 2nd. She may be able to be in attendance for us, as well as, I know Charlie Simmons has confirmed, because most of the projects that are in the capital improvement plan are from the Building Department and public buildings. So he'll be available to talk about the details, some of the trade-offs, some of the, what he's put in there, whether it relates to a ninth school, whether it relates to not building a ninth school, sort of what kinds of things are being contemplated that he's put in there for, so they don't get lost, is part of the deliberation process. Does that help?
So these first three detail entries in early September are really all staff?
Oh, staff.
Okay. And then you would see it at the moment that they would fall appropriately prior to coming to Capital Subcommittee?
Yes, because it's really about development and kind of flushing them out with all the boards and departments that may have something to do with it.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Stone?
I just want to say thank you for having the budget development process put this way. It's just, it's the clearest, most comprehensive calendar we've ever looked at as a committee, at least since my time here, and it's really great. So thank you.
All right. So we have a motion, a second. So subject to, why don't we just vote it, subject to any further sort of detailed amendments as they get work through, but I think we could still vote it? Okay. Do you want to call for a vote?
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. The second item was to have a second reading of the guidelines and priorities for budget development. This document for the broader public's benefit is somewhat different than what we've provided in the past. This is intended to be a fairly high-level view of the school committee's priorities to inform the budget development process. There will be a more detailed and contextualized statement that will be put forth in the final budget document that will provide, you know, broader context and rationale for this. But this is really intended to kickstart the budget development process and to provide the staff with the guidelines to do so. So this is largely unchanged from the last reading. The primary thing that is different is simply consolidating the points on special education into one line item. But I'm interested in hearing if folks have any additional comments or questions. But first, I'll move it. Thank you, Ben. Yes?
A little nitpicky, but the second page, Item Six, the K through 12 art, I had sent you a suggested revision of K through eight, because, you know, nine through 12 doesn't do recess, and I think, you know, these are the things that we're really concerned about maintaining in K through eight, and I think there are other things that we are definitely concerned about maintaining at the high school. Probably maintaining and improving on the present program would be the way I would word it, so that it's clear, because, I mean, it just, to me, that makes more sense. I don't know about others.
If others want to take a look. I know we talked about this in Subcommittee and other, there were some folks that felt like they wanted it to be inclusive of high school, but I think I'm open to rewording.
I would want to say something about the high school, but not necessarily the same.
On the second page, number six, right there.
What I recall from the discussion is that there was, and I would support the, even if it's a little overlapping, so that, because recess doesn't apply to nine to 12, that this is more of a high-level expression of a priority which is to support language, arts, and physical education throughout the system. And in the spirit of this being a succinct guideline document, that's what came up in the discussion before, and I'm sympathetic to that, as opposed to trying to break it up into a goal for that K to eight and then a set of goals for the high school, partly because goals for the high school haven't been articulated, but I'm not sure they're needed in relation to this set, because we have music, we have art, we have languages at the high school.
And what was, I'm sorry, Ms. Robsky, what was the? My suggestion was to make it K through eight in the following list, and then say something about the high school maintaining or and/or improving the programs that we have, because they're a wide variety. They're much more than just these, and that are important, I think, at high school.
So essentially, if I were to just recap, so what you're proposing is that the bullet points say K through eight, art, music, foreign language, recess, and physical education as part of the school day, comma, and maintain or improve the high school offering?
Offerings.
Offerings, in those same areas.
In all areas? In? In? Program? Is it not just as, I mean, this is a, I don't think the implications of this are that different if we don't explicitly say, and the programs at the high school, if we say that, how about just robust art, music, foreign language, and physical education programming as part of the school day?
So just remove K-12 altogether?
Remove K through 12 and call it robust, which sort of speaks to an array, right?
Fine with me.
And you can throw recess in that. You can throw recess in there, or take it out, because recess is part of the physical, I mean, it's not physical education, but it's part of making sure that our students are not just sitting all day. I took it out because it makes it easier.
So that is fine. We can vote it with that edit. Are there any other questions or comments on the document? All in favor? Thank you.
I'm only sorry that Judy Myers is not on the committee to see this day when the budget guidelines and priorities are in fact on two pages.
And passed in September. The good news is I actually got some mail addressed to Judy Myers today, so she's here in spirit. Thank you, Mary Ellen, once again, for consolidating and moving these things forward. Thank you, Beth, in your new role on the school committee at pushing these things through. So it's a terrific standard to set and a great precedent. Anything else for finance? We're meeting on Monday, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, anything else? That is it for us.
Mr. Pollak, capital improvement.
So I have three quick items. First, as has already been said, the Capital Improvement Subcommittee will meet at 8:00 in the morning, location a week from Friday, October 2nd, location to be determined. And we will take up the CIP requests for the schools. Second, I would just, for those of you who missed our meeting of the School Committee on September 10th, I would just commend you to the tape if you want to find out about all of the amazing projects that the Building Department managed to achieve for us in time for the opening of school. Four major projects with new classrooms and facilities all over town, and Charlie Simmons gave a very detailed presentation with images and everything, and so you can find out all about that. And then, third, we have a proposed vote that I would like to move, and it's a contract amendment to the consultant, between the town and the consultant, Civic Moxie, who's been engaged and has been conducting the school site identification study, and this is for additional services, for doing more detailed work on some sites, and also for continuing engagement in. foreign language, and physical education programming as part of the school day?
So just remove K-12 altogether?
Remove K through 12 and send, and call it robust, which sort of speaks to an array, right?
Fine with me.
And you can throw recess in that.
You can, you can throw recess in there, or, or, or take it out, because recess is part of the physical, I mean, it's not physical education, but it's part of making sure that our students are not just sitting all day. I took it out because it makes it easier.
So that is fine, we can vote it with that edit. Are there any other questions or comments on the document? All in favor? Thank you.
I'm only sorry that Judy Myers is not on the committee to see this day when the budget guidelines and priorities are in fact on two pages.
And, and passed in September. The good news is I actually got some mail addressed to Judy Myers today, so she's here in spirit. Thank you, Mary Ellen, once again, for, for consolidating and moving these things forward. Thank you, Beth, in your new role on the school committee at pushing these things through. So, it's a terrific standard to set and a great precedent. Anything else for finance? We're meeting on Monday, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, anything else? That is it for us. Mr. Pollitt, capital improvement.
So I have three quick items. First, as has already been said, the capital improvement subcommittee will meet at eight o'clock in the morning, location on a week from Friday, October 2nd, location to be determined. And we will take up the CIP requests for the schools. Second, the, at, I would just, for those of you who missed our meeting of the school committee on September 10th, I would just commend you to the tape if you want to find out about all of the amazing projects that the building department managed to achieve for us in time for the opening of school. Four major projects with new classrooms and facilities all over town, and Charlie Simmons gave a very detailed presentation with images and everything, and so you can find out all about that. And then, third, we have a, a proposed vote that I would like to move, and it's a contract amendment to the consultant, between the town and the consultant, Civic Moxie, who's been engaged and has been conducting the school site identification study, and this is for additional services, for doing more detailed work on some sites, and also for continuing engagement into the coming months as part of a public participation process. And this contract amendment is in the amount of $16,400, and I so move it.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
Ms. Graham, any discussion? Okay. All those, you want to call for a vote? All, all those in favor? It is unanimous. All right.
Thank you.
And I have it to sign here also. Okay, curriculum, Ms. Treulsky.
Very short. We are meeting next week. Sorry. Yes, next week, the 30th, in the morning, at eight thirty.
Okay. All right. Government relations, Ms. Dow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are busily trying to find a, a date to meet, to discuss the many items that we discussed at the last school committee meeting, so I won't go over those again, and I think we are closing in on a date, but I don't know what it is yet. I think Ms. Coyne has that information, so I hope, look forward to reporting on this more next time.
We have a appointment of a delegate.
I beg your pardon, and in, in keeping with striking fear in the hearts of anybody, of the school committee members who miss meetings, I would like to put into nomination as the school committee's delegate to the MAS C, Dr. Lisa Jackson, who has served us so ably and so well, and learned how to handle the MAS C listserv, and, and has done, I think, one of the best jobs we've ever had in terms of reporting to the school committee on what's happening with the MAS C, and keeping us more a part of the MAS C than we have been in the past. So I put her in nomination, and she is not here to object.
I will second it. And I will only second the nomination by saying that when Dr. Jackson was contemplating becoming on the school committee, a story I will tell, because she's not here. So she was a professor of education, some of you may know, she was a PhD in education from Stanford, and she has all sorts of credentials and has all sorts of knowledge theoretically about school systems, and so, and so she had so much to bring here, and one of the first assignments that we, opportunities we offered her here was to see what school committees were like in the trenches, and MAS C has provided just that opportunity for her. And so I think it, it rounded out her theoretical knowledge and understanding of education and school committees by just being, just going straight, straight for the jugular, so.
She loves every minute.
I'm delighted to second it. All right, any discussion? Any other names to put into nomination? All right, all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, Lisa. For what is it, for those about to rock, we salute you. So, so anything else? Dr. Jackson's not here to provide a policy review update, but I think the update is there's no update, is, does somebody want to, who was at that meeting, want to just briefly summarize where we are, which I think is that we need to have another meeting about the topics?
So, so we had a, we had a really, really good, long discussion about the, the potential changes to the policy on residency with an eye towards determining what, what is residence in term, mostly around the top, around the subject of how long does one have to be in the public schools of Brookline, what portion of a year counts towards being resident, and at what point do you move from being a visitor to Brookline, and to becoming a resident in Brookline, and, and a, and with the, the right to attend the public schools. And it was just, we've gone over a lot of the issues, there were members of the public there who had a strong interest in this, we heard from them, and Dr. Jackson said at the end, and I think quite rightly, that, that there, there had been so many different issues put on the table as a result of this conversation, that she needs to go to write a memo essentially to the subcommittee, summarizing the issues that, that we seem to have consensus on, and summarizing the issues that were still before us, that we needed to hash out, but that we were not ready, as, as previously hoped, to move the, to move that policy revision to second reading.
Any other questions? All right, then, we're, okay. Additional liaisons and updates. Mr. Glover.
I just want to give an update on Steps to Success, which had its first meeting of the year last Tuesday. A lot going on in terms of planning for the year and recapping of, of summer activities, but a few things that I think were of particular note. Information on last year's class, this, the class that just graduated, or the seniors that just graduated this past spring, there were 22 seniors that graduated. The average GPA for those seniors was 2.85, which is up from 2.46 from the year prior. In addition, the, the class of 2015, Steps to Success seniors received a total of $730,000 in merit scholarships, which is up from $182,000 in 2014. So the, the Steps to Success class from this past year really was a, was a remarkable class in terms of their, their academic success, and we wish them well in, in their future endeavors in college and elsewhere. A few thank yous that are due to folks in the community, supporters of the Steps to Success program. This summer, the, the program held its annual party in the park programs, which provide school supplies to, to many students in town. Special thanks to, to all of the sponsors, the various vendors, I don't have the names of all of them. Century Bank and Eastern Bank were both new vendors this past year. Special thanks to State Senator Cynthia Cream, who successfully filed legislation in this year's budget for $10,000 to support Steps to Success 2016 summer programming. Special thanks to Pooja Mehta, who many of us know, in helping to make that possible. A special thanks is due to the Balfour Foundation, which has committed to providing $50,000 to support the College Success Initiative work being done by Steps to Success. And lastly, a, a special thanks to the Brookline Chamber of Commerce, which named Steps to Success as, as lead sponsor, or was named as sponsor, excuse, Capital One Cafe for the 2015 Chamber of Commerce golf tournament. And Steps to Success will receive a donation as a result of that.
Great. Wonderful update, thank you. Ms. Treulsky.
So today was the first EDCO board meeting, which was quite well attended, and a number of issues, not a lot, and things are going better in terms of finances there, and participation in their programs. We, what we did get each, that they did for each individual community, was what our participation has been in the program, and it, it could be, you know, just one person who did one of the roundtables, or one of the professional learning participation, but actually that we had 54 people participating in the professional learning particip, programs. I will send this, not to take more time now, I have it electronically, and I'll send it to the whole group so that you can see it. The, the one thing on the bottom, there's a whole big part of different workshops that they've had that, that were just offered to everybody free of charge in, in all the EDCO communities, and it's just that you can see the array of things that they have been offering and what they will be offering. This fall, there was a discussion of reorganization of the MEDCO board, and I don't know if we've had that, or people are aware of that. Apparently, there was some, some, the, the legislators were pushing for some reform there, and the board has been meeting, and that's been moving along, apparently. I'm trying to think what else was important. I think that's, it's just, it was just this morning, so I didn't really have time to, to write this up, but it was a good meeting, and I let the director know we will be there this year. And that was it.
Great, thank you very much.
Any questions?
All right. Ms. Dow.
So, because the 21st Century Fund Board is having its first meeting as we speak, I am unable to attend as our new liaison to the 21st Century Fund Board, but, and I look forward to reporting on what they discussed at our next meeting, but I can tell you that, that, as you all know, the executive director left, I think, at the middle or end of last year, and I, they decided not to hire a new executive director, instead they've, they've created a new position called, I believe, executive administrator. I, I could have that wrong, and I apologize to the person in it, who I also believe is Stacy's elbow, and who I've not had the pleasure yet to meet, but, but have seen a couple of emails from her, and I know she is getting her feet wet pretty quickly, because they are already planning for the gala this year, which will be on November 14th. And I, I, again, I look forward to reporting to the board about what they're hearing about, because I know they're hearing about a number of the programs that have gotten started, and their innovation, they don't have an innovation czar, they have an innovation fellow, and, and some other projects that just sounded like they, they were going to be interesting for us to hear about, and are percolating right along, so, next time.
Any other interim, I mean, sorry, additional liaisons and updates? Okay. So the only other one that I have is an update that is not quite an update for us, but it's an update more for the Brookline Interactive Group. So the la, we had a school committee meeting that was not televised, but was an open meeting, we had members of the public there, we had media there, and it was covered in the media, but because it wasn't on a traditional Thursday night format, I thought I would recap some of the highlights of that, because there were discussions about a possible interim superintendent and/or possible transition process. So I'm more, this is more to recap what we've already said in open session, and was already covered in the media, but we did not do on a Thursday night, so. First, we want to confirm that we do not actually have a vacancy in the superintendency at this point, that seems to have been a point of confusion. We are committed to transparency in this process, and so even though there's no update, we are going to continue to say that, that there's no update, that the superintendent has accepted another role pending successful contract negotiations, but has not resigned his role here, and so again, we do not have a vacancy as we sit here at 6:45 this evening. That, we did however, begin to talk about a hypothetical process if we were to have a vacancy, and there were a couple of things we talked about. First was support for a rapid naming of an interim, since obviously the daily work that happens in our buildings continues, our principals, our vice principals, our coordinators, our teachers, our central office staff, everyone continues with the outstanding work that they're doing, and so we did think that rapidly naming an interim would be important. We talked about the pros and cons of an inside versus outside interim, there are obviously our, our pros and cons, and just we talked a little bit about the process of naming an interim. And so the one thing that I didn't do was ask for the general consent of the school committee to begin drafting a post for an interim position, should that become necessary. So I guess I can do that now, ask for your general support for drafting an interim superintendent role, oh, thank you, if that becomes necessary. Does anyone have any objection? It's not necessary at this point. The next thing that we talked about was having a discussion of how many of the current priorities would be executed through an interim leader versus waiting for a full-time leader, so we did not make any decisions, but we did talk about the relative, the relative prioritization of all the things that are on our plate, and which ones we would move forward, but in no, the overwhelming sense of the committee that, at that meeting, and I, I think remains, is that this is a conversation on the margins, this is not a wholesale reimagining of what we might do this year, this is a tweaking and a, and a load balancing, if you will, not a, not a reevaluation of what we've already committed to. And then, third, hypothetically, if there were a superintendent search process, people would want to engage in a full superintendent search process, even as we named an interim with a target hire date for a permanent superintendent of next summer. This process would include a national search firm, someone who could help identify a national pool of candidates, specific interest in making sure that that pool of candidates was a diverse set of candidates, and beyond that, no, no decisions were made, but that was the general sense of the discussion, that that would be a priority. And then finally, we talked about communication and ways that we might continue to improve our communication on this. Clearly, the most obvious mechanism is through televised public meetings, there are other ways to do it through our website, there are other ways to do it through the TAB, or through, someone suggested, God help us all, a blog, but making sure that there really were, were not, that, that information didn't trickle out, that when things, something was, information was available, that it, that it got disseminated. And obviously, through this process, there are going to be things that we can't disseminate because they are proprietary, or they're, or they're confidential, but just so people know, we are, you know, as much as humanly possible, that doesn't compromise our negotiating position, we are committed to being as transparent as possible, so, so folks know what's going on. So I think that's my only update. Did I miss anything from that meeting? Okay. Okay, great. Any other liaisons or updates? All right, then we are ready for public comment. Thank you. Arthur Conquest, Mr. Conquest. Typically, we give people three to five, oh, the microphone, please. Typically, it's three to five minutes, but since you're the only one, you may take five. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for having me. I think most people know me. I just want to say that, excuse me, excuse me. If I don't come before you, if I don't write a letter to the TAB, responding to articles that I read, information that I hear, I'm really doing a disservice to myself, to this community. I'm also letting down and disrespecting Dr. King, Malcolm X, Edgar Edwards, and all the other people that have come before me, that have allowed me to be here in Brookline, send my children through this public school system, and participate in the community as a whole. So I just want to say that it would just gnaw away at me if I didn't come before you. I may say some things that offend people, but that's just the way it is. Franz Fanon once said, "All I wanted to be was a man among other men. I wanted to be a man, nothing but a man." That's, that's how I see myself. I want to respond to, or add some additional comments that I made in the letter that I wrote to the TAB, about an article that Jennifer wrote, something about advanced math programs for students of color, spreading beyond Brookline. I did write the letter, I was limited to 300 words, I didn't say all that I wanted to say, and I want to complete what I wanted to say here. Third thing I wanted to say, I don't, I don't think in the 18 years that Mims was at that school, that I said more than 100 words to in all the 18 years. So this is not about me trying to defend Mims as a person, this is about social justice as far as I'm concerned, okay, and making the school system in this town a better place for everybody to be part of. Now, as you all know, I ran for selectmen. I have to bet two years ago, Brooks, Ames, and myself ran as a team, and Brooks said to me, Brooks, Ames, and myself ran as a team, and Brooks said to me, "Let's go see the administrators or managers for the Steps to Success program." And so I took the dive and went over to the high school, and I couldn't have been in the meeting with the, with the administrators for more than five minutes, and they said to me, "Arthur, make a pledge. Would you like you to make a pledge of three hundred dollars to the program?" And I said, "Okay." And I'm going to say about two weeks later, I got a piece of information in the mail, and I read it, and I saw that, that Dr. Lupini was one of the administrators, he was the head of something for Steps to Success. And I said, "How hypocritical. How could he be, excuse me, how could he be an administrator for Steps to Success, and then at the same time, okay, reject Dr. Mims as the headmaster for Brookline High School? It's his choice, but I do think, from what I know, okay, and this is a history, this is thirty-five years of what I've known from London in this town." And just let me give you a couple of examples, quick. Mary Jennings versus Al Fortune. I think that was about nineteen ninety-four. You guys remember, anybody remember that?
Right.
Okay? Mary Jennings couldn't shine Al Fortune's shoes, and I'll bet that Al Fortune is better than ninety percent of the principals that are in this system today. I, I'll bet my life on it. But they, but the system rejected him, and I heard these cockamamie stories about, you know, he had flaws. I used to go to Harvard and listen to his lectures at the school event, but he wasn't good enough to be the headmaster at Brookline High School.
So it's been about five minutes. Could you start to wrap up?
Sure.
Thanks.
Again, there's a history. It's Bob Weintraub versus Gretchen Underwood, and now we have Mims. And I think that we need to really be honest with ourselves and begin to treat black people, Asian people, and Hispanic people in the way that we say that we want to treat them. And we have our Martin Luther King programs at the high school, and then for the town. I think, we're, last thing, we're lying to this community, we're lying to those children in the high school, and I, we're lying to God at what we, at the way we're doing business, and it has to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Conquest. As you know, it's not our policy to respond to public.
Yeah, I understand that. I got you. Okay, Karen, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much for coming. No one else has signed up for public comment? If there are any other people who would like to make public comment? Okay, great, thank you. Then we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the student report. Mr. Khan?
Thank you. So this feels a little bit mundane after what Mr. Conquest said, but, so we've started the school year, and after the first two weeks of school, the class freeze is over. With the class freezes, it's, it's a rule that you can't change your classes within the first two weeks of school unless there's, like, a major issue, like you don't have English, or one of those other graduation requirements. And what we found is that after two weeks, most students will settle into their classes, so that if initially the level feels too hard or too easy, they might decide to stay in it. And after two weeks, they can make a more informed decision, and it decreases major quick scheduling changes. And I think scheduling went pretty well this year. Mrs. Holman and I made, made like a back-of-envelope calculation, there was about twelve thousand course requests, and most of them were right. Like, there's many that don't go through, but given how many there are, I think the system's working well. And then a fun fact from Mrs. Holman, she's teaching a history class for the first time at Brookline High School. It's a senior class called Gender in Society. And then, in BHS Government News, speeches were made during advisory on Tuesday for people running for legislature, and the polls opened on Canvas today. Canvas is our online teacher-student portal, so we're conducting online voting, and I think sometime next week we'll have the results. And then, this Saturday, the PTO is hosting College Estee Workshop, and it's one of the many ways that BHS is preparing students for their post-high school plans. Like, this is separate from that, but connected. This year, the high school made the position of a college and career counselor, Lenny Libidson, who used to be the head of guidance, is now in that position. And then, at the beginning of the school year, teachers asked students to introduce themselves using their preferred name and pronouns, and this was at the request of the Gay, Trans, Straight Alliance, who talked to the faculty during the opening days, where faculty meet before students come. And the reason is that there's a growing number of students at BHS who are gender nonconformant, and this was a powerful way to respect them and create a safe learning environment. And although not all student, not all teachers participated in this, those that did give very positive responses. And along these lines of increasing inclusivity and respect, Creators Conversations, which is a group that planned last year's Assembly, Day of Assembly on Race Issues, is trying to create another group in the school, more focused on students. And I think that's being led by Alexa Thomas and Malcolm Clathorne. One of those groups already exists in SWS, but we're trying to get one also in the mainstream. And I'll keep you updated on that work and anything else in this domain.
Questions for our student representative? It's a wonderful update. Ms. Chalobski?
I heard that the Brookline High School football team beat Boston Latin.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to confirm.
That is true.
Wonderful, well, thank you so much. It sounds like a great start to the year. All right, we are at the, we're ten minutes early for the superintendent's report, which includes introduction of new staff and a general report. So, either we can start with the general report, or we can do some of our votes in the next ten minutes. Does anybody have any objection to at least knocking off one of the school committee proposed votes before? Because we do have staff coming, unless, unless, do you want us to start? Do we have people, enough people here? No? Yeah, let's wait ten minutes? Okay. So, let's move on to Agenda Item 7A, which is the Memorandum of Agreement between the Brookline Community Foundation and the Town of Brookline, Scholarships for Brookline High School Seniors. Ms. Dunn, do you want to just give us a one minute, what this is? I think there, it's all at your place, and it's been sent to you in advance, but maybe you just want to give us the one minute of what this is.
Can I go two for one minute? Two, two items in one minute? So both the items A and B in front of you are agreements with the Brookline Community Foundation, who will be holding and investing funds that are donated on behalf of the students, either in a scholarship form or in others, other grant form for the Brooklyn, Public Schools of Brookline. So these, there may be, there will be an additional agreement, as referenced in one of the documents received, for the Lauren Dunn Astley Fund. There will be an additional agreement to rework that, since one of these agreements actually changes how that fund was originally established. So, essentially, both these documents establish funds on behalf of the Public Schools of Brookline and the Town of Brookline, with the Brookline Community Foundation, and the agreements outline sort of what the terms of those are. So the vote and the motion is to allow for the superintendent to actually sign those agreements, and then they'll get forwarded to the Board of Selectmen, I believe, as well.
Great, so why don't I move it? I think I had language here. Do I have language here? Right, so we moved to, so I moved that we authorize, let me make sure I'm doing this right. Yes, that, that, this, that we, I moved that we authorize and accept the terms of the agreement for the Brookline Community Foundation Scholarship Fund for Brookline High School, which basically allows us to do what Mary Ellen just said.
It's the first agreement, yeah.
So why don't we start there? I've moved it, wait a second. Ms. Stone, any discussion on this one? Ms. Chalobski?
I apologize, because I wasn't here when they first presented it. I did have a meeting with John Hodgman just to, to get up to date, but I just want to be clear, this is one avenue for scholarships. We still are maintaining the scholarships that come to the school department, correct? And that we, those are, are held separately and are under our control, correct? And this is not to replace that?
No, no, this, this actually was precipitated by a donation that occurred over the summer of significant size, and so, in terms of kind of, I think the Town Finance Director, Steve Cirillo, had presented to you about this plan to have scholarships being held by the Brookline Community Foundation, so this is just following that same kind of protocol and model. So it's not replacing or supplement, subplanting any prior scholarships, those are all in existence, they're all, wherever they used to be. This would be, this is for, this is for a particular new scholarship.
A particular, or any?
Which came into a general, it came in as a general scholarship, as opposed to a more specific scholarship, named scholarship, as you are traditionally used to seeing. Still operates under the same structure of the, I just blanked on the, Scott Burkard? His same str, he was involved with the agreement, it still operates the same way as all of the other scholarships operate. It's just another scholarship fund added to the ones that exist.
I get that, but I'm asking about the agreement that we're, we're, I understand that would be, that, those monies would be in here, and they would be distributed in the same way as ours are, any of the scholarships are just distributed at the high school. What I'm asking is any future, I mean, they're going to do fundraising to have more money in the scholarship fund, and that's great, and that should go there, but if people want to do a scholarship fund through the schools, can they still do that, or will everything be funneled through here?
It de, so I'll answer that with it, it depends, because the, it depends is really about the wishes in, of the donors, and what restrictions donors put on donations for scholarships, or donations in general. So the donor would be informed of what their options are, and the donor would make those decisions about whether, okay, it's fine to go into a general scholarship fund, or no, I would like it under this specific, these specific terms. That's really driven by donors, not by the town, or the, or the school department.
Yeah. Okay.
No, I, I think, I think the answer to your question is that there is still a way to, that, that, that the, there's still a way to give through, this is a, this is an additional vehicle.
It's an additional, right.
This is just an additional vehicle.
Additional, just an additional.
That's what I'm trying to, to make clear.
This is really good news.
Right.
I'm thrilled, this is fantastic, and we have more kids, and we need, we're in, more in need of scholarships, so it's fantastic that they're doing it, I really appreciate it, I think it's wonderful. I just want to understand.
It's an additional vehicle.
Right.
Okay.
And, and many of those that, that are set up by, by relatives or friends in, in memory of, I think all of those will continue to come as they have in the past to the school committee to be accepted and added, yeah.
Excellent. Okay, motion, second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you very much. So the next one is, we'll try to sneak in one more before seven-ten, is the revised agreement between the Brookline Community Foundation and the Public Schools of Brookline, the Fund for Young Children, which I think you spoke about a little bit, right? All right, so I will move it, is there a second? Ms. Gatto, any discussion about this one? It's a separate thing, it's, it's B under your, in your packet. Ms. Chalobski?
So I guess I'm questioning the one and a half percent annual fee for administering this fund? We, I don't think there was a fee in the past for these funds, and I'm not clear why, one and a half percent seems kind of high. And I'm sorry, Mary Ellen, I should have asked you this question ahead of time, I just.
Yeah, because I wasn't involved in the negotiation of any of these, so I can certainly ask.
There was no fee in the other one, so.
Certainly ask Steve Cirillo to get back to me and forward that through the, through, through Robin for the committee.
Okay, I, then I'd, I'd like to request that we hold it till we understand better.
What's the timing of this, Mary Ellen? I mean, do we need this?
This exists.
No, no, no. This is a restructuring of it.
It's a revision.
It's a revision.
Right.
So again, I don't know if, if that percentage was in a prior agreement that was already, I don't know if it's new to this agreement as part of the revision, or whether it was part of a prior agreement, and it now seems new because we're rereading the agreement.
My sense is there was never an agreement, if I remember correctly, in the past. I don't remember ever voting in agreement, and I sort of remember when this fund was set up. It may have been voted when I wasn't here.
Yeah, so for whatever reason, it's billed as a revised agreement, I don't, I don't know what the original one was. Do others have thoughts on this? We can vote it pending an answer, we can hold it. Do others, is this an important issue for other people?
Just to be clear, oh, sorry, I haven't recognized. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to be clear, the fee is on the donation, there's no, there's nothing that comes out of the town covers, right? And it's.
But it does, in the sense that.
Right, it lowers the.
It lowers the amount that's available to families. These are, if I, if I am correct about this, these are scholarships for early childhood kids who can't afford the, the fees for our early childhood programs.
Right, right, and do we, this may not be a question that anybody knows the answer to, do we know what administrative tasks are really involved in terms of managing this? It, it may not be unreasonable that there be some administrative fee, particularly if you're looking at this fee, it's, you know, at one point five percent, you know, it's like fifteen dollars for every thousand dollars, you know, it doesn't seem like a crazy amount.
I, I, I think it just makes sense to compare the previous management agreement to see if there was a fee, and if there wasn't.
There is, it's actually in your packet.
It is?
Yes, it's the last page, but I'm actually looking at the, so if you hold your packet and go one page in, it's on the second to last page, on the signature page, the fee's there. I'm just looking at the new agreement.
So it was one percent before? And now they've upped it to two hundred fifty dollars from sixty-two fifty as a minimum.
But the fee that the, that, so in Articles Two and Three, on the first page of the actual agreement, it specifies the administration by the foundation and compensation of the foundation, which is subject to their board's vote. We can't set it, we can't change their policy, we can either accept that they, that their administration of a fund for us costs that, or we can, or we can say no, but, I mean.
Yeah, it's, it's not unreasonable, the, the, the percentage, so.
And, and, sorry, if I could just add, just the, if I'm looking at the right page, if I'm reading it correctly, and maybe I'm not, the one percent fee from the prior agreement was assessed quarterly? And the new fee is assessed annual, or annually, right?
No, quarterly, quarterly, too.
No, it is?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's paid.
Applied quarterly, that, so that means the same, okay. Sorry, my misunderstanding. Okay.
Right, which means that, I mean, this is, we'd have to, we'd have to talk to the, to the fund itself, to the foundation itself, and say, you know, when did you vote this under, maybe we can review their minutes, but it's a decision of their board.
Yeah, I'm not inclined to decline money, so.
I would, I mean, the Brookline Community Foundation, like other funds, has a, some staff requirements, and has to pay rent and everything, and it's gonna, that money's going to come out of the donations that flow through it one way or another, and this is just a piece, a piece of supporting the administrative costs of the, of the foundation.
Exactly.
So are they also charging on the other one, then, too?
It was not written into it.
Scholarship fund?
Yeah, the scholarship.
Yeah, it wasn't in that. So we have, I mean, we have a couple of choices. Do people, I mean, do, do we feel clear enough that we want to vote this? Or do we want to get more information? We've already voted the other one, which does not seem to include a fee.
What I want to understand is, is this something that's even, well, so, I mean, folks may feel like it's reasonable regardless, but is this something that's even under negotiation or, or not? I mean, is it's, so in other words, if, if we don't vote it now, do we?
I think we go back and get more information. No, no, if we don't vote it now, we go back and get more information and decide whether to vote. It's not a negotiation, but it's, if people feel strongly enough about it, then, that they need more information before they are able to vote on it, then we cannot vote on it. If people feel like it's more or less reasonable and they're willing to vote on it, then, then that's what we'll do. All right.
I, I think, I mean, I'm, this is pure conjecture, but, but from little I know about these things, I think that also the more separately-held funds that a nonprofit has to manage, they simply have a burden of accounting, of paying their outside accountant for more hours on an annual basis to just do their reporting. And so they're reticent to manage funds without, that would decrease their ability to, to give, pass other monies through. So it's just kind of this fund pulling its own freight in terms of their accounting costs. Again, I just made that up, but I've, I've seen similar things.
Right, so, so, so again, we're, we're not going to get there by conjecture. So either we, we're going to vote this because we feel like it's close enough, or we aren't. And we're going to go back and we're going to get more information. So vote, hold, vote. All right, all right, so what, what were you?
I, I, I said vote, but I think Ms. Charlofsky would prefer to hold.
No, no, I got that.
Yeah, okay.
Vote, hold.
I think we can vote on it, but I think there is a conversation to clarify that, that should happen.
All right, so what we'll do then is we'll vote. You're more than welcome to vote against it. And then we will bring back to the group a little bit more information about it. How's that? How about we schedule, make sure that we schedule just a bit of an update on clarifying some of these pieces. And then we can move to reconsider if we need to. That's what the motion to reconsider is. All right, we have a motion, second, discussion. All right, all those in favor? All right, all those opposed? Okay, great. Thank you very much. And I think we are going to move to the next agenda item and we'll skip B and C, Ms. Stone, for the moment. So we have the superintendent's report. Let me just find it quickly. There are a couple of pieces, are you starting, Dr. Schmuckler? Excellent. So we're going to start with the introduction of new administrators, I think. And then there are some pieces of enrollment and, and other announcements at the back. But, Dr. Schmuckler, thank you.
So thank you, Madam Chair. I am, it's my absolute pleasure to introduce our first new appointment, which is Donna Finnegan, who's the interim vice principal at the Runkel School. Donna is a 20-year veteran of public schools, having been conquered before she was in Brookline. Donna was a speech and language pathologist for eight years at the Baker School, and then has been the ETF at the Runkel School for the past five years. I'm, I'm doing this because I know Donna so well, so correct me if I've missed anything. And.
You missed some years, but I'm not going to fill out.
Okay, good. Donna has been a valued member of the administrative team at the Runkel in her role as ETF. And I know that staff are thrilled to have her as the interim vice principal and working both with all of our students. And Donna brings to the role an incredibly wry sense of humor, an immense compassion and vision, and just a wonderful sensibility. And congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Do you want to just share one quick observation or one?
So I'm thrilled.
Otherwise, we're all going to start asking you questions. We have a long line up, so. Give us something quick.
I'm thrilled to be in this position. I've been in education for almost 25 years, actually. But in my previous role at Runkel, I only got to meet about 15 to 20% of the special education population and their parents and have really great relationships with them. Now I have relationships with 100% of the population at Runkel, and I'm thrilled. And the amount of students that we have had move in, we're up to, I think, 602 students at last count, which is a lot for Runkel, if you know the history of Runkel.
Yeah, we do.
The international population has, is just immense. And I've met families from all over the world in the last two weeks and been able to support them in multiple ways. So that's been, so we're doing something right because people are coming from everywhere to be there. So it feels like a great place to be. And I really appreciate that.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for coming tonight.
Okay. So next is Darby Neff there, did I say this correctly? Who is our guidance coordinator at Brookline High School. Darby is also a, has had more than 20 years' experience in the public schools. She's been in Boston, Belmont. And in her last position was at Newton North High School. In, she's been a guidance counselor and a secondary guidance counselor in many of her positions. And in Newton, she was also the ELL liaison and leader in Newton, which she has been credited with doing immense work systemically on supporting the growing ELL population in Newton and really looking at clinical supports and wraparound and bridging the gap between guidance and counseling and clinical services and special education. And so we are very thrilled to have Darby join us in our administrative team at Brookline High School.
Hi, everybody. I'm very excited also.
Come over to the microphone, sorry.
I'm also very excited to be part of Brookline Public Schools. I think for me, coming from a system that, after 18 years at Newton North High School, that I always considered resource-rich. And then I walked into Brookline High School. And it's, it's a very thrilling place to sort out, for me, first of all, my passion around balancing guidance work with the counseling work. Sometimes I think they're separated out. And I've lived my career trying to figure out how to make sure both of those things happen for all of the students that I work with. And I'm really looking forward to modeling that and carrying that over as I move into my position in Brookline. And just to segue from what Ethan talked about around Lenny Libenson's role, I'm very excited to be part of helping to develop a new college and career center at Brookline High with Lenny taking on the college piece. And we're in the process of hiring a job developer. And really looking to provide access to these resources for all students in that building, which is a high priority for me. So thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
So next is Said Ola, who is the vice principal at the Upper Division School. It's very thrilling to have Donna Finnegan as the interim at Runkel, and Said, who was a former math teacher at the Runkel School and now be the vice principal at Upper Devo. Said has been a middle school math and social studies teacher since 2008. And his experience includes time as an assistant dean of students, resident director at the Exploration School Summer Program, and as an instructional aide with Matco. So it is thrilled to have Said as part of the administrative team at Upper Devo as we build a new school model.
So hello. Yeah, it's, I'm enjoying being back at Route Nine. Runkel was there a couple of years ago. And I'm back. And everyone else is enjoying and adjusting to the new environment. I'm returning to something that I've seen before. I'm excited to work with middle schoolers. I've worked with the middle schoolers in my entire educational career. And now to have a space to be able to work specifically with seventh, eighth grade, and next year fifth, sixth, and seventh, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, to really craft who these young men and women are going to be when they grow up is a great opportunity. It's a great place to do this. And I'm really excited.
Standing, thank you.
So last but not least for my crew is Wendy Ryder, who joins the Special Education Department as an administrator. And Wendy is going to oversee specialized programming, pre-K through 12, in the district. Wendy is, has many years of experience in public education. She's been in Middleton, in Beverly, and most recently at City on, on the Hill, where she was instrumental in launching a new high school in Bedford, in New Bedford. And Wendy, by background, is an occupational therapist, has also worked extensively in the healthcare system. And so we are thrilled with the level of expertise around related services, as well as experience in early childcare and special education that Wendy brings to the public schools of Brookline. So welcome.
Thank you. Hi. I have, in the past few weeks, had the opportunity to be in many of the elementary schools, right in the classrooms. And I really can't speak to the passion and spirit of our educators. Their commitment to rigorous curriculum and an inclusive setting is just so true to the mission and, and vision of Brookline. And that's really exciting. We're developing a new assistive technology team department. And just being able to offer so much more access to curriculum and tools for students is really exciting. Really happy to be here.
Great, thank you.
Over to my esteemed colleague Jennifer, who's going to do the introductions.
It's my pleasure to introduce our new special assistant to the superintendent for strategy and performance, Ben Lummis. Mr. Lummis comes to us from Education First, one of the world's leading international education companies. And for much, most of his professional life, Ben has led significant school reform efforts in high-poverty school districts, in organizations, for example, National Center of Time and Learning and Mas 2020. So we are absolutely delighted to have Ben, and we welcome you to Brookline.
Thank you, Jennifer. You'll hear more from me later tonight, but just to say, so far it's been a great start. I find, finding everyone warm, welcoming, friendly, and also, most importantly, willing, willing to engage, willing to collaborate, willing to share. And so it's been a great start, and I'm certainly happy to be here. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Lummis. I think you, we're excited to see what you've already done and as though you had been here more than these last five minutes. All right. How many days you've been here? Exactly, yes. It's like newborns.
I am delighted to introduce you to our new K-8 enrichment and challenge support coordinator, Matthew Rosenthal. Mr. Rosenthal's professional experience includes being a middle school math teacher in Newton and the middle, excuse me, the math curriculum coordinator in Shrewsbury and Lexington. Matt fully understands our ambitious plans and expectations for this program. And even with that, he tells me that this is his dream job. So I am absolutely delighted to welcome you, Matt, to Brookline.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be here. And it's been a great start to my days here in Brookline. I've been so impressed with the level of collaboration, particularly among my coordinator colleagues and specialists and teachers, and particularly around the area of instructional coaching. I'm really excited for opportunities for creativity in the classroom, project-based learning, technology, all of these areas which, in which I have a passion. And I'm especially excited about providing opportunities for all students and meaningful learning for all students, and help bring about equity across the, across the district. And I've visited all the schools, and everyone has been incredibly welcoming and supportive and collaborative. So thank you for the opportunity.
Great, thank you so much.
I am thrilled, excited, delighted, and ecstatic in every adjective, positive adjective I can think of to introduce Alene O'Sullivan as our Director of Human Resources, who has come and hit the ground running from, with some incredible experience. She has, was at Mass Art, Framingham State, Boston Police Department, in her prior lives before Brookline. And what's exciting is she's been, has lots of experience in terms of developing search committee guidelines and assisting administrators with hiring practices. She's dedicated to diversity and hiring and expanding diversity in our workforce. And her talents are endless, and they're much appreciated. So I am thrilled to have her here. And with that, please welcome Alene.
Hi, everyone. It's always hard to go last. So I, I echo everything that you heard from everyone else. Truly such a warm welcome here from everyone in Brookline, and I'm thrilled to be here. And I started August 10th or so, just as we were ramping up hiring for the school year. And I made it through that. So I think if I could make it through that, I could probably make it through anything. Thanks, nice to meet you all.
Oh, thank you. So there are a few more administrators that aren't here, but we'll meet them, I assume, in subsequent meetings? Is that right? Yeah, there are a couple more on the list. I, I just want to say, normally what happens is, some of us, and I will not point to the most tenured members of our school committee, will grill our new, our new hires lovingly and compassionately. But she has all sorts of interesting questions, which we're not going to let her ask tonight. All we will say is, thank you for coming. We will say, we are so excited by your passion, your energy, and there are so many exciting opportunities this year, especially since this community just passed the third-largest override in the Commonwealth's history to support your work, to support public education. And it was ably led by Ms. Stone and hundreds and hundreds of residents. So the great news is that you are now a part of a community that has tremendous support for public education and incredibly high expectations, both at the same time. So some of you have already dived, dove, divven into your jobs. And we're excited, davened into your jobs, exactly. So for those of you who are new, welcome. We are just excited about your experienced but fresh eyes. And so feel free to make sure you always provide those observations to us and ask all the naive questions because it will make us better and bring your best practices. And then for those of you who have been here for such a long time, thank you. Thank you for being such exemplars of the kinds of people that we're trying to grow, cultivate, nurture in our system. And it's just so tremendous to always see people move around and have terrific professional development opportunities and advancement opportunities within the system. So thank you for, for being here. Thank you for your years of service. Thank you for many more years of service to come. It's just terrific to, that we have that kind of district. So thank you. And thank you to all of our administrators for the introductions. And I'm sure some of you will be back, and we will grill you with all of our questions then, if that's okay. So in the meantime, we have some other pieces of the superintendent's report. Dr. Schmuckler? There are a couple pieces in the report. One is the national merit semifinalists. Do you want to read the names? Or do you want to? It's always a good highlight.
Okay, so the national merit competition recently announced the 16,000 semifinalists. And of the 16,000, there are eight Brookline High School seniors who've been named as semifinalists, and they are as follows. Zachary Alchilla, Jacob Arnstein, Elizabeth Feilain, Samuel Klein, Enrico Macali, James Sarato Marks, Sophia Tong, and Harold Tredman. So it's a great honor for our students at Brookline High School and for Brookline High School.
Very exciting. Enrollment?
Enrollment. So I don't know, I, I know there were some questions, which I've come prepared to provide some data. If you'd like me to go through the report in general or just possibly respond to it?
Yeah, do you want to just give some of the highlights? And then I know there were some, I mean, there's so much data here, just some of the highlights of the data. And then I know there were some specific questions, which I forwarded along to.
Yep, which are.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
So overall, as of Tuesday, September the 15th, we have a total enrollment of 7,790 students. So we are almost at the 8,000, the 7,800 mark. It's an increase of 212 students over the same time period last year. These are preliminary. We report out our data to the state in the October Sims Report. But that is our active enrollment numbers. We are still enrolling students. So as many of you know who've been in this busy corridor, over the past summer, it has quietened down greatly. But on a daily basis, we still have families moving into Brookline, and we are still in the process of enrollment. And Dr. Lupini outlined very clearly sort of by grade, by school, enrollment numbers, where we've had increases and where we've had decreases. And I can speak to some of, I think, the questions around certain things. Do you want me to go straight into that?
Sure, sure. So there are 629 kindergartners. Do people at the table have questions? And then Dr. Schmuckler can ask, answer the ones that were sent ahead of time. Okay, maybe we'll start with those questions and see if that bubbles up anything else.
Great. So one of the things, as you just mentioned, we had 629 kindergartners. So that is a lower enrollment than expected in terms of the 650 number. And as people know, by sort of mid-fall last year, we were actually at 669, 670. And some of that we did, there's been a question on, did we reduce a section? We did reduce a section at the Baker School in terms of our kindergarten class sections. Any questions? Just around kindergarten and numbers and sections?
I noticed at the Baker School.
I noticed at the Baker School that the total number of students this year is 794, which is somewhat less than last year, but not by very much.
Correct.
This is more a comment than a question. I think it's interesting that the numbers are that high this year when we know that Hancock Village has taken off the market about a third of their units, they're rehabbing them. So, we have fewer of those. Had those units been on the market, heaven only knows what this enrollment would be.
So the original number that, from Hancock Village, is not as high as in terms of number of units. What Hancock Village explained, Chestnut Realty, is that they're going to have about 40 units in flux over the year, but they don't have 40 units in flux right now. So they're renovating approximately, I think it's 18 units, and then those will go back on the market and then they will renovate another. So initially, I think we had this larger number of units off, but it's actually in process.
Lower number.
It's a lower number of units that are offline, but certainly there's going to be a rolling. And we can certainly expect an enrollment spike, because they're also renovating units to have increased capacity, as well as sort of market in terms of availability.
So does that mean a lot of turnover during the school year, from what they were saying?
You know, I mean, that's what some of the questions we asked. Their expectation is, and certainly our, sort of looking at that data, is probably not in terms of people with school-aged children moving in mid-year. So they're not expecting that that should be a huge increase in terms of Baker enrollment, but it's obviously unpredictable. And some of that information only came available to the school district in the summer. It was not something that they, we had knowledge of prior to that.
Right.
In terms of planning.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, that's good to know.
Sure.
So, I mean, you mentioned that the kindergarten number was 630, so slightly below projection. Can you talk about total enrollment and how that number is relative to projections?
So the number is sort of in keeping, I think, with projections in terms of as we inch up over the time, particularly if you look at the high school, the incremental projections. We do have certain grades where we've seen higher, higher numbers. We're watching closely, for example, the fifth grade at the Runcle School, second grade at the Runcle School. There are a couple of other schools where we're really closely watching grades for numbers. So, not a lot of, in terms of, you know, grade-by-grade predictability, but in general, the numbers, the overall enrollment numbers are rising up as predicted. I think the kindergarten, the 629, was short of what was predicted, but everywhere else in the district, we've had increases. Devotion, as many of you know, last year, we had an increase in numbers of devotion, particularly around seventh and eighth grade, with students moving and tracking those students, many students going back to their home countries. And so that was a downtick last year. We've seen uptick in those numbers at the higher grades in upper devotion. And that might be some of the stability with, you know, people knowing in terms of, you know, what the plan is for schooling. So we track them as much as we can and sort of try and track, you know, when people have enrolled, why they've left, where they've gone.
But my understanding, just to, and so correct me if I'm wrong, is that the total enrollment, which is near 7,800, even though the kindergarten number might be a little bit lower than expected for the kindergarten number, and we did take that as a consolidation.
Yep.
The overall, being close to 7,800, is more or less on track
Correct.
With what we expected. It's just they didn't show up in kindergarten.
Right.
They showed up in other places.
Right.
So, to answer your question, on a system level, it's pretty much still what the original projection was.
Right.
It's just, not kindergarten, it's in other places.
Correct, correct. We didn't enroll the kindergarten class as predicted.
Beth, just to add to that and to some of the other new members, every month, Janice gives us the enrollment for each school by grade, so that we would have those numbers by October 1st. You can't do it really before then, because things settle in. But by October 1st, we get a good spreadsheet.
Okay. I'm going to go through some of the specific questions and then I'm happy to take other questions. Folks asked about the decrease in materials fee. So we did have a decrease in our numbers, in our materials fee program, which is our staff, children. And we had 12 students who graduated from the materials fee program. We had 16 students who are not returning. And we also had a breakdown of four students who were prior materials fee moved into Brookline, so families are now living in Brookline. We had five students accepted to Boston Latin, so those students left the district. And then we had seven students who returned to their neighborhood schools, to their neighborhood public schools by family choice. So that's, that accounts for the reduction in what we saw with materials fee this year.
That's helpful, because the discussion previously had been that we were expecting the materials fee number to go up as the number of staff
Yes.
Would potentially indicate. So this is, this is helpful background, so.
Of the 16 that are not returning, you gave a lot of, there were a lot of categories as to why, folks who were going back to their own district, folks who are accepted in another school, Boston Latin. What does the not returning signify? Or is there any way to explain that? Are these people who stopped being staff members for the town or for the schools?
No, so of the 16 who are not returning, that's the breakdown.
Oh, okay, that's a sub-break.
Four moved to Brookline, five moved to Boston Latin, and then seven moved, so that's the nine, seven moved back to their home districts.
Thank you, I misunderstood.
Yep.
Thank you.
No worries. Out of district, there was a question regarding, there was a slight reduction in out-of-district numbers from the start of last fiscal year to 56, that we started off last fiscal year at 61. And as many people know, the out-of-district numbers, excuse me, the out-of-district numbers are fluid with many students moving in. So the math isn't going to work out, so if you do the math, you can, it'll, but we had four students graduate last year from out-of-district. We had five students who returned to the public schools from the out-of-district. We had four students who left, who were in out-of-district placements, who returned to their home countries in the past year. We had two students age out, so those are students who were with us until they were 22 and aged out. And then, on the list, we actually have seven new students who are in out-of-district placements for the first time for FY '16. So that's...
Move-ins or people who were students here and are now in out-of-district?
We have two students who were move-ins, who moved from, into Brookline and into out-of-district placements, and then five students who were current students in Brookline, who required an out-of-district placement.
The only reason that, and this one was interesting, simply because their out-of-district number has gone down, both for, I mean, for philosophical reasons, as much as anything in terms of bringing Brookline students back to be educated in Brookline. And so that's terrific. I think the discussion that I remember last year was, like, how low can this number reasonably be? Because there will always be an important segment of students who should be educated out of district. So, I think one of the discussions we had last year was, is it about the low or is there more to go in terms of bringing students back? And so this is just helpful context to give color to that.
Any other questions?
Why don't the numbers add up?
Probably because I didn't have time to do the math, in terms of just how many students moved in and who moved out, in terms of, so only, there's only a differential of six.
Yeah.
So I can absolutely prepare that for the next, in terms of the exact...
Okay, I was just trying to, because...
Yeah, it doesn't account for just the six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And some of it was flux around. We have students who we know are going out of district, but their placement starts in the fall, so they're sitting on a list and only roll over. So, but I can absolutely aggregate that for you, so it's, so the numbers do
Thank you.
Do add up.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions regarding enrollment that I can try and answer?
The only other one that I noticed was the Metco number, that I know more or less 300 is our target, not a magic number, but just a target. And we're at 293. Any, do we know, was it, I know we had 22 kindergarteners, I think it said earlier. So that, I mean, that number's gone up and down. It's just worth noting that it's not a targeted reduction. It just happened to fluctuate, because it always fluctuates.
Exactly. And I think we entered students in kindergarten and siblings. And so again, there was no targeted reduction.
Right.
It was just happenstance in terms of numbers, students who left the district, students who graduated, students who came in in kindergarten. Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Stone?
So I've been trying to remember how many grades we had last year that were at or above 700. I see two this year. It's the same two, first grade and third grade?
Well, the same cohort.
The same cohort. They grew up.
No, last year's was a first grade as well.
No, it was kindergarten, second grade.
Really? Okay, I stand corrected. Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay. Dr. Schmuckler, thank you so much. Any other, that's the end of the report. Are there any questions on anything here, I guess? Enrollment or other? All right. So we are back then on our agenda. We are back to item seven C and D, the memorandums of, memoranda of agreement with the Brookline Educators Union, paraprofessional unit, and with the Brookline School Transportation Employees Association. So do we want to move these? And then, you can, do you want to tell us what they are?
Yes, I would like to move them, and then I will tell you what they are.
All right. So, there's a motion for, maybe the first, both of them or the first one?
I want to move both of them and we'll discuss them separately and vote them separately.
Okay. So we've moved both of them. Mr. Glover, as our negotiations rep, would you like to second? All right, great.
So, I thank you, Mr. Glover, for that second. So these are both just essentially letters affirming that we recognize that there were some, essentially some typos. We overlooked some things in two separate agreements. One with the paraprofessional unit, when we signed the one-year contract, we had an adjustment to different schedules and there was a number of one schedule that was left out. This letter, this vote merely says that the school committee recognizes that it was an omission and adds it back in. It doesn't change anything about the agreement. It just recognizes that that schedule should have been included in the contract. And the second one with the Transportation Employees Association, these are the people who work on our school buses and service monitors. And there was a, there was a conflict between the agreed-upon amount for one, for one area, for one employee, where the, where the agreement was inconsistent by seven cents per hour with the living wage law in Brookline. And so, this simply gives our assent to fix that problem and to bring her wages in compliance with the living wage law. And so I recommend our passage of both.
All right, so, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion? We'll vote them separately. Is there any discussion of the first one?
And their respective unions have signed, have signed already. So we are merely affirming our intention to have these things fixed.
Any discussion on the first one, the BEU paraprofessional unit? All right. Seeing none? All those in favor? Excellent, it's unanimous. So should we, the second one has been moved, seconded. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor? Excellent, it's unanimous. Thank you very much to our tireless school committee representatives. Thank you to our tireless staff. Mary Ellen, I said was Elaine. The person who just got introduced was probably part of, thank you Elaine. Excellent, okay. So now we're on our last, sorry, our next agenda item, which is an update on the central administrative staffing and structure. This is something that recognizes the need, as we have grown our enrollment, to increase our staffing, to make sure that it is able to support our buildings, so staffing at Central Office. So, Mr. Glover, I think is going to give us an update, is that right?
Yeah.
And there's probably some point at which we need to sort of endorse this plan in some level of generality. If we endorse it at too detailed a level, it means that every time a small thing changes, we would have to revote it. We don't want that. But given the magnitude and scope of this, we'll probably bring this back for a general endorsement of the direction at some point. But at this point, I think it's an update.
You're welcome to do that tonight if you like. Just kidding.
Thank you.
Just kidding. Just a little lebity. Just give me some moment here to get things set up.
Okay. And in the meantime, we do have some things to sign, oh, I have things to sign. Never mind, you all don't have to sign this. All right, so we'll just take a moment while we get it set up.
Turn it on. Thank you, Robin. Ready when you are.
Right.
Yeah, ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, I'm here to give an update on the reorganization of the central administration, Central Office. I understand there's been, there's been plenty of work on this well before I joined the team here. I also understand that the committee and management have discussed reorganizing Central Office team numerous times during the spring and summer, and that with the support of the town people, you approved a budget to do just this. You decided to reorganize the Central Office team with new positions, adjustments to staffing, and new reporting relationships. And if you indulge me, I want to offer an analogy that I think will help put these changes and the need for them into context. I've been puzzling on this analogy for a couple of weeks. I've not mentioned it to my staff colleagues yet. It sort of clicked into place and sort of made sense to me around 3:30 Tuesday morning. So, I don't know what you're like at that time of the day, but things are often a little fuzzy for me. So we'll, we'll give it a shot and let me know how it goes, okay? So, so, we begin with a tree. It's an apple tree, because that's the time of year, which is so pretty appropriate. I think a tree is an interesting organism, because it has many parts that all contribute to its health and growth. In this analogy, the shiny red apples are the schools. They are literally the fruit of all the hard work and many components of the system that we know as a tree. The leaves, the bark, the trunk, the branches, the roots, soil, even the sun, air, and water, all go into contributing in the effort to produce the nice shiny red apples, which are very tasty, of course, this time of year. For this discussion, I'd like to focus on the root system, actually, as a metaphor for the central administration. Like the roots of an apple tree, the central administration is one of the essential components of the health and growth of a school system. In a tree, if the root system is compromised, the health and growth of that tree is also compromised. The roots of a tree can be compromised in many ways, through disease, by being cut, by being constrained by a pot or sidewalks or roads. And if that root system is constrained or compromised, it affects the health and growth of the tree. The tree could be stunted or it could grow at an odd angle. Perhaps it can't fight off insects or rot. That tree will most likely survive, but it may not be able to produce the fruit it's expected to or grow to the health and size it needs to. I think it's the same with the schools, with any school, central administration. Like a root system, it can be compromised or constrained by things like competition, a lack of effective systems, insufficient size or scale. If a central administration is compromised, then the health of the entire system is affected. And it can be held back from becoming what it, what it has potentially become. This isn't to say that it's the only thing that if compromised, that's wholesome, will still grow strong, can still go strong. It still is affected by the roots, the trunk, the bark, the leaves, a sort of a stand-in for many other things. The school committee, the teachers, the students, those are all things that affect the wholesome as well. But in this case, in terms of the root system being a metaphor for the central administration, I think that's the spirit that the administration and the school committee worked together to develop a budget that called for and funded a reworking of the Central Office team. You acknowledge that the Central Office, as it was organized and staffed, wasn't sufficient to meet the growing complexity of the district, including significant capital challenges, the continued lack of progress for a significant number of students, and of course, more mandates for state and federal government. So, with that in mind, let's take a look at what we all set out to accomplish and see where we are so far in reconfiguring and building a strong Central Office team. So some premises, which you're familiar with. First, a strong and capable central administration team is needed to support the people and program facilities that create our great schools. It's also needed to proactively lead the continued growth and face increasing complexity of our system and our student body. And then also, strong central administration is needed to meet the growing number of local, state, and federal requests and mandates. The second premise really is that the central administration required to support a system of 8,000 students is different in structure and scale from that which supported a school system that was fewer than 6,000 students. So then also, as we shared with you before, and you folks have... So then also, as we shared with you before, and you folks have discussed already, so this isn't really news, new to you, but just as a, to recap, a new Central Office structure will help us, and these are what we want to accomplish with the reconfigured on structure, is it'll allow the superintendent to focus on the educational program, okay? Like a superintendent needs to. Increase the level of support and accountability that's provided for principals. Principals, perhaps one of the most important group of leaders in the system, if not the most important, always need proper coaching, mentoring, supervision, and support. There was a sense among the committee and others, among senior staff, that that wasn't, we weren't able to do as well as we needed to. And that was one of the imbitis for, that's one of the imbitis for rethinking how to structure Central, Central Office. It's needed to, and we hope to accomplish enhanced operations to focus on education program, and then also solve, establish or renew policies or procedures where they're not in place or need to be renewed. And also to formalize our way of doing business. Our way of doing business will be different now than it was five or 10 years ago. Not only, and also not only with principals, but also with all staff and leaders in the system. They also deserve proper coaching, supervision, and mentoring so they can become the leaders and staff and teachers that they, that they really can become. Also with HR, we hope to continue to sharpen our focus on recruitment and hiring, especially this day and age with turnover across the Commonwealth in terms of just people moving on, changing of, of the guard, that sort of thing, ongoing complexity around hiring at all levels of any system. We need to sharpen our processes or procedures in that area, particularly relevant to my position, obviously, but also to the whole system, is really there's a sense that we need to emphasize a strategic plan, build one, create and implement action plans. But then also, really importantly, have the data to measure our performance against that plan and see how, not only how we're doing, but also how we can improve in an ongoing way. And related to that is really having the, a data team and the leadership and support of a data team that can develop and make accessible the data both internally but also publicly. So we understand how we're doing on key strategic measures. And also, as, as even come up tonight, for sharing the great work that's happening in our schools in a strategic and sort of concerted effort as well. So those are some of the things that you're going to see now. The, a number of shifts, new staff, reorganized staff, different reporting relationships. But those are the, of the, you know, those are the many pieces we hope to accomplish with the steps we're taking at this point. So I want to get some help with these pieces, but just to start off, this is, you'll, you'll see some slides across the three major areas, administration, finance, teaching and learning, as well as student services. And you'll see slides from 2015, last year, of course, existing, and in some areas, future as well, FY 2017. So the biggest thing to gather here, from my standpoint, is that there were, last year, as you know, four major departments. A and F, teaching and learning, student services, and human resources. Coming to this year, you'll see a shift towards three. And that's been done through human resources, for the most part, being absorbed by administration and finance. In terms of the principals, one, a couple of different pieces here. The principals still report directly to the superintendent, but the evaluation and support and coaching and supervision of those principals is being divided among the deputies for teaching and learning, also student services. Okay? That's one of the ways we're getting to better support and mentoring of the principals. I'm going to ask Mary Ellen to come up and, and talk about the current year of, of FY 2016 for, for administration and finance. What I want you to point, what I want to point out here is a couple of things, is you'll see six direct reports with human resources being absorbed into administration and finance, possibly two others, okay? But instead of doing that and just adding on, administration finance is restructured, and Mary Ellen will describe the changes and, and rationale behind those changes.
So if you think of administration and finance as a three-legged stool, and what that is, is really about your core resources, your personnel in an education environment, your facilities, your core delivery mechanism, and utilities and technology is becoming more of a utility than, as your electrical is, since we all carry cell phones and computers with us constantly. And then you have your finance and your sort of funding structures. So essentially, trying to make this operation a little bit more efficient and to allow for the attention, direction, and monitoring that needs to happen in all these three areas in order to support classroom learning and teaching and learning that happens in the classroom. So the director of facilities and operations is a new position pulled from, in terms of an FTE, pulled from within the ranks. And that position would have the director of food service, transportation, and supervisor of custodian report to that position. The position will also be focused with in supporting the building department. There actually should probably be a, a sort of a dotted line or a handshake that would be happening between this person and the building department, to essentially be the owner's agent on a day-to-day basis with work projects, construction projects, where the operations can be monitored, a voice of the schools and the principals can be heard with the building department and sort of facilitate those conversations. Human resources is essentially the same structure as it was with Elaine O'Sullivan reporting to me. In finance, we add a special revenue funds manager position, essentially to really attend to the work that was begun around fees, fee collection, grants, revolving funds, and sort of a number of other different funding sources that, that the school department needs to pay attention to. There are particular changes in regulations and guidance that are going to be happening over the next year where the school committee, finance subcommittee will be involved. And then to point out, what's missing here is payroll. And under the town structure, payroll is a shared, sort of shared function, but there does need to be sort of a payroll tie to, under the director of finance, because we do need to actually pay all of our, our largest resource in our organization and do that timely and correctly. So there is a payroll, that's not, because it's absent, it is not forgotten. It is very important, but that is tied directly with the town in a liaison role, similar to how the director of operations would be working with the building department.
And just, it's pretty clear, but Jennifer handed me a nice little toy here, so I might as well use it. So here, you see the orange box, just to be clear, those are positions that are, have been, have replaced previously existing positions, as it says. And then the black box is like on director of facilities, is a new position. Obviously, another thing, another piece here is the new reporting relationships, and there are a significant number of those. I think there are 16 folks who have got new managers or new, new direct reports, people that they're reporting to across the three departments here. So some significant changes in that on main levels for people. Jennifer, you can come up. I want to point out a couple of things before Jennifer speaks is that, you know, I think the numbers here for Jennifer in, for FY 15 were fourteen, fifteen direct reports, which really does speak to, and I think, you know, the impetus here that all of you had was, was really right on in terms of that's no way for either a senior manager like Jennifer to really divide her time, but also really makes it very, very difficult for these folks, these folks who are really, really important to our system, to get the supervision and coaching and support they really need, not to mention the supervision of their, of their programs as well. So Jennifer, you want to take it from there?
There's your pen. So yes, last year, that number was 14. And then the year before and all years prior, it was 15 because of the director of professional development that was moved over to human resources. So that's FY 15. This is different than what you saw in July, and we really appreciated, you know, some more time with this. What you'll see here is a position, senior director of programs, and you'll see a senior director of teaching and learning for this year. Let me describe that if I may. This position right here is much like, but not exactly like. It's the restructuring of Amy Martin's position, which is director of program review and grants. Those responsibilities are not going away. But what you've heard me say many, many times is that Amy is like a utility player, if you will. She, she, her responsibilities are far beyond what's written on her job description as program review and grants. And she supports me and the office of teaching and learning in whatever ways are necessary. But what we're looking to do here is, with a clearly defined senior director position, she will remain responsible for program review and also, and for discussion at another time, program evaluation will rest with Mr. Lummis and the director of research and accountability. But program review for things like the after-school, out-of-school programs, or our program of understanding our differences, those sorts of reviews will continue to rest in this position, now described as senior director of programs. So this position will supervise these three programs. And I want to show you, well, I, yes, you'll see here that while this program steps to success, by definition, you might think it belongs here, but this is going to, to actually stay in with me as deputy superintendent with a more streamlined form of supervision and participation with the steps to success board. This position will also work to understand, first, all of our after-school, out-of-school programs, which if you remember, a few years back, in that program review report, the, the breadth and complexity of our out-of-school, after-school, you know, summer programs is such that that committee recommended actually a full 1.0 director and an office of after-school, out-of-school programming. So we'll, we'll take a step toward that with the responsibilities resting here with the senior director of programs. Then we hope in January that we would be able to hire a senior director of teaching and learning. What you may remember earlier was a senior director of elementary, a senior director of secondary. And in looking into this more deeply, that breakdown didn't serve us best. That, I'll come back to that in a minute, but what you will see then in FY 17 is two senior directors of teaching and learning, yes, with curriculum coordinators falling underneath these. The numbers here of coordinators listed really doesn't matter. But with these two positions and the senior director of programs, what we will be able to do then is we will streamline that supervision evaluation. We will be able to much more clearly identify responsibilities and who is accountable for what in terms of programs. So for example, you know, a K-12 program, our comprehensive social emotional learning and bullying prevention program, if we had it broken down by elementary and secondary, you know, where would that fall? But with two senior directors, we can make arrangements across pre-K through 12. So excuse me for that jump from 16 to 17, but it's important that you understand that ultimately what we're looking to do here is to develop that full office of teaching and learning with three senior directors. So if all goes well, a January hire here with a senior director of teaching and learning. I will continue to supervise the director of educational technology and libraries and steps to success. Director of professional development would move from human resources back to the office of teaching and learning, and I will continue to supervise some curriculum coordinators. All that said, what I am very excited about here is the dotted line, if you will, from principals to my position. And Mr. Lummis stated it so clearly earlier. We have principals and headmaster who need coaching, they need support, they need that supervision evaluation and those conversations on a regular basis in a much closer relationship than has been possible in the past. And so we now have not 10 principals and headmaster, we have a total of 12. And so if you're looking at the three roles that will share that responsibility, is it an even divide? Is it four for each of us? We don't know. And when decisions are made and if, in fact, changes occur, we would be looking at that breakdown of supervision evaluation for principals and headmasters across the three of us, superintendent, deputy superintendent of student services, and myself. But I think that there is, there's, there's great work here, and the principals' leadership team, they are all very excited about this structure. FY 16. So the only thing then with FY 17 is the addition of another senior director of teaching and learning. And it will be through the work of the senior director of programs and that transition with bringing another senior director on in January, that we then would transition to a third senior director, such that what you would have in the office of teaching and learning is the deputy with three senior directors, and then directors and curriculum coordinators, program coordinators within all of those. And what I can tell you is that this is a structure that gives me great confidence that we will be able to actually deliver on our plans, work toward the goals of that strategic plan, and actually be able to bring forward to you the evidence of the success, you know, within specifically the office of teaching and learning, but then as it relates to the entire system. Yes?
Yeah, great. Karen? So like I did with Jennifer, I'll point out the, the number of reports here. So seven, actually going up to eight this year, but then a reduction to four direct reports. So Karen and the office of student services are really looking at a two-year transition here and roll out.
So there's not much change in my structure from, or in the Department of Office of Student Services from what you've seen prior in terms of the Collins Report, but also the documentation. As Ben said, so FY this year, this is what was there. And we, so this is FY 26, this is this current year. You met Wendy Ryder, and she's the new special education administrator for specialized programming. And this is a fairly similar structure to last fiscal year and this fiscal year. There is the dotted line to the three principals, and that was a, a team development structure that we had spoken about in terms of Jennifer, myself, and we're already looking at the coaching and support in a more embedded, direct way with our principals. So that's my structure for this year. And then next year is where we had initially allocated the addition of a director of special education, who will oversee then all of special education services. We very much work on a team model. I don't see that changing. I meet with my special ed directors every Monday. I foresee continuing to do that in terms of the importance of consistency and continuity and alignment pre-K through 12. But it does give me some of the opportunity to do more of sort of the systemic work, the work that we've been doing on disproportionality in special ed, which is a very important department goal, also looking at really our goals around mental health and services and growing programs. So that's, will be for next year. And so I then have four direct reports. And then the structure of special education, who will report to a senior director. In terms of the high school, those are current positions who are reporting to the director of special ed, and that, that's not a change. I know it's noted there, but that is a current reporting relationship.
I think that especially student services, you know, is such a great example of really adding one senior director here allows for, you know, sort of improvements on two levels. One, that senior director can support those persons very directly, which with the number of reports she has, the number of reports, if anyone has the number of reports Karen has, it's, it's difficult to do that. It also frees up on another level Karen and other senior, senior staff, senior staff members to do the, the planning, the strategic work, the leadership and guidance of the system as a whole, which has been hard because of their spans of control and their workload. So really, you know, anticipate it for next year. If this person comes on, then you're really gaining on a variety of levels there. The last piece is strategy and performance, my area. Obviously, last year, although people were working on this, there weren't any formal positions that were assigned to it, obviously. This year, what we're looking at is, of course, my position. I've taken over responsibility for the, for the data team. We work very closely with Cory Stott and her team. In terms of data specialist, that's a position that is in the budget right now. We're looking to hire. We, we've actually changed that position a little bit through consultation and just sort of work with the team and also with the senior staff. And you'll see it'll, it'll play out over two years. This first year, really need to focus on the quality and, and the This first year really need to focus on the quality and the cleanliness of the data. The data at this point is, has, for any number of different reasons, over the years, that we have in our systems and some of our major databases, just needs a reworking to make it, not usable. Well, also, it also has issues about being accessible, and we'll work on those processes this year as well. The data specialist coming on does, you know, two, there are two benefits from that. That person will be able to work on cleaning the data to make it better, but it also then frees up Cory and others, and Charles specifically, who's the, who's the applications manager to work on the processes. They cannot get the processes because right now they're dealing with putting out fires around the, the quality and the cleanliness of the data. An important role that what we're looking into and, and considering very seriously is communication specialist. It's interesting, as you folks know, I'm doing a bunch of entry plan conversations with people across the district, 40 or 50 people, and it keeps on coming up again and again. Conversation with school committee members, with principals, with coordinators and directors, just a real need for how do we communicate both internally and also externally around the work we're doing, both successes and challenges, but also how do we do that in a strategic way that helps build support, inform people, but also helps us sort of move through executing our plans, programs, and that sort of thing. And so I think there needs, there, you know, we'll be looking into whether that role really fits and can benefit the district in the way we work together. The last piece here is just, as I said, the data reporting and analysis manager. This is a person we actually was, is, is in the budget this year, and instead, we're hoping to get this data specialist. This is a person who will take, once we have data cleaned, data processes cleaned up, they will really help and work with the director here to pull together data, pull together reports, so a couple, on a couple of levels. One, we know how we're doing in programs, in schools, and also for the central administration, but then also how we can improve in those, and they're really responsible for pulling the data out of databases and putting it in form and format that people can use that data. So that person will be essential for that role, so that's for FY 2017. That's what we have for tonight. Happy to take questions if folks have some. I may have to call my colleagues to go back to the trees, because I'd like to a lot.
So first of all, thank you very much for this. Thank you for getting introduced about an hour ago and then producing all of this so quickly. We appreciate that, including the photocopies at our place. We appreciate that. This is the first time, I think we've had a lot of discussion about a couple of things. One is the overall goals and principles and the problems we're trying to solve, and I think there's a lot of alignment there, we've talked about them for the last number of years. We also talked a lot about the budget implications of this, and all these positions were already baked into the budget, so there's all the, every time we mention new staff, I don't want folks to be confused that we are increasing the budget. This is already baked into the budget that was passed last spring. So what this is more is sort of just a little bit more of the detail or explanation behind those positions and where they fit into the structure. So since there's a lot of alignment on the principals, but it's the first time we're actually seeing this org chart in this incarnation, and given that we have about one and a half minutes left, my guess is, is that the number of questions, if we were to really dig into this, would be large and overwhelming, and so maybe what we will do is simply say, if there's anything pressing, people just really, really don't understand, we should probably take that now, but my guess is that people are going to want to take a look at this and, and maybe gather some questions that we can bring back for, for another time. Does that make sense? Because we don't need to vote this tonight. Anything pressing on people's minds? Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right, it's time for a new business. Is there any new business? All right, and if not, then we have need for an executive session, so I will move that we enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the school committee's negotiating position, and to conduct strategy sessions and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, superintendent administration. We need a roll call vote. Ms. Coyne, could you poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Thank you so much, and we will not reconvene into open session, so have a wonderful evening. And Mr. Chang, we ended on time.
Ahead of time.
Ahead. I do not expect to end our executive sessions on time. So just be happy for a moment.